All right, it's seven o'clock. I'll call this meeting the Buchanan City Council order. If you'll please follow me in a moment of silent prayer and meditation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can be first to welcome everybody tonight. This is Armigan, nice little house. Glad to see everybody here, especially our college students. We'll get to you here in a few minutes. We do have a few recognized guests to get started with, and I'd like to recognize Mrs. Carr from WV LTAP, Kim Carr. She has a presentation again to one of our departments.
I'd like to get Jerry Arnold to join me.
Uh-oh.
It is my pleasure to be here with you all this evening. And just to give you a little bit of background, I'm with a group called the West Virginia Local Technical Assistance Program. We are housed in Morgantown at the University in Civil and Environmental Engineering. We're funded through the Federal Highway Administration and the West Virginia Department of Transportation. And our goal is to provide training and technical assistance to communities and other agencies that deal with roadway issues. And we are part of a national program, so every center has an LTAP or they have a T-TAP, which are those centers that serve travel governments. And we also have a LTAP Center in Puerto Rico. So the good thing is we have a lot of resources that we can draw on in our program. And this year was the first year that we participated in what was called a Build a Better Mousetrap Competition. And of course, the engineers in the office looked at me and said, "Do you want people to build mousetraps?" And I'm like, "No, no, no. We just want to recognize innovative ideas, an improved way to do a process, or an improved way to accomplish a task." So Jerry Arnold, Street Commissioner here, submitted an entry for their truck tire changer roll tube bender. And kind of a mouthful, but what this was, they were able to bend the metal that was used in your farmer's market. And so that was definitely a creative and innovative solution, and one that the whole community has benefited from. So it's my pleasure to present Jerry with this first place award to the City of Buchanan in recognition of their initiative and innovative thinking in developing a creative solution to address a pending challenge. Now, that's good in itself, but remember that national program I just mentioned? Well, there's also a national competition, and your entry won second place in the national competition. And so I'll congratulate you guys. And it's on gift card. So again, we really appreciated the entries, and you know, we hope that we'll get more from you guys, and you have a great Public Works Department, and we just, you know, encourage you all to keep up the great work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jerry.
And we've been working on this. My idea, but we've got a lot of employees that worked on job on to get those structures up, so that's where this goes to.
Jerry, let me be the first, on behalf of the mayor and myself, to congratulate you and your crews on the great work that you do. You make us look really good. Thank you very much.
Well, maybe the first to tell you that there's no pay increase with this. Sorry. I'm so shocked.
Jerry, can I have your picture?
Thanks for that.
Hey, Mrs. Carr, thank you again for the recognition.
You don't have to stay for the meeting, Kim, if you want to.
Okay, thank you.
You can exit right.
Trying to run her off.
Well, I didn't mean it that way. It's good you brought your photographer with you, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Which one? Congratulations again. Our next guest will be Mr. Rob Hitten from the Upstate County Development Authority. Mr. Hitten, you have the floor.
Guess I use the podium over here. So what you guys have there is a letter that I prepared for Mayor Donaldson, or Davidson, sorry. And that is in regard to what I'll be discussing tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'm very privileged to speak this evening as the Executive Director of the Upstate County Development Authority. I've had the chance to meet most of you in this room and work with you already in the short time that I've been in this position, and I look forward to meeting all of you and working with you as we move forward together. Within Upstate County and the City of Buchanan, we have some of the best organizational working relationships in the region and possibly in our entire state. Not too often do you find so many different organizations that work so well together, so collaboratively, and with so much success. I'm proud to be a part of those organizations and to be a contributor to the future growth and development for generations to come. Fortunately, I have selfish regions for those successes, but in this instance, it's good to be selfish. My wife and I aren't originally from West Virginia, however, Buchanan is our home. This is where we call home, and this is where we're going to raise our family, and we're in the process of buying a house. Cross your fingers. Hope it happens. However, I'm here tonight to discuss an investment commitment that was requested prior to my hiring, as well as to present a vision that I have as we move forward together. It's come to my attention that the Upstate County Development Authority's original funding requests for the current fiscal year has been partially approved. The budget was developed with the understanding that the City of Buchanan had committed to an investment in the amount of $40,000. However, I want to make this clear: We do appreciate the initial investment of $15,000, and we thank you for that contribution in our authority. Unfortunately, our financial plans for the year have been structured around the city's full commitment. I would ask that the City of Buchanan council members consider the impact that the Upstate County Economic Development Authority has had in the past and will continue to have in the future. In my short time as Executive Director, I feel that I have started strong. I believe that the working relationship Upstate County Development Authority has with the city has already strengthened our position for future development. We consider the city to be a partner, and we work tirelessly to keep the city and its constituents' best interests at heart. The upcoming year is going to be very exciting in Buchanan, as well as Upstate County as a whole. We have many projects on the horizon, and we have a lot of commercial interest as far as location to this area. Some of the things that are lined out here in the letter, obviously, is the completion of the sale of the West Virginia Army National Guard, the old facility. To bring you guys up to date, we will be handing over that property, hopefully tentatively, on September 30th or October 1st. And we have an opportunity for a sealed bid for the purchase of that property that are due September 30th. So we hope to have, basically, that deal wrapped up by the end of October. That would do two things. One, that would clear the bond that the county has so, in the past, has generously committed to, and it'll release everybody's risk that's involved there, from the bank to the county to, as well as Upstate County Development Authority. The next step is pushing Phase Two of the Army National Guard at Rushy Ford. So working with the Western Army National Guard and getting a start date on when Phase Two can happen and appropriating the funds for that next initial phase and keep that project moving forward with as much speed as, I guess, humanly possible from a federal government standpoint. Oil and gas. There is a huge opportunity in oil and gas right now. If you were able to go to the pipeline seminar they had last night that Dominion put on, it still is a proposal, however, this is a huge opportunity, albeit short. There is an opportunity to capitalize on this from an economic development standpoint and bring jobs to the area, bring income to the area, and bring revenues to the area. However, we need to focus on downstream activities as well on the natural gas. So that's one of the things from Upstate County Development Authority, as we see, is capturing the downstream value opportunities in that natural gas. Once that gas is drilled and is pumping out of the well, what can we do to create opportunities that will bring jobs here, bring manufacturing, and use the natural gases coming out of the ground for future development? Commercial development. There's lots of interest from outside corporations, be it in the United States, as well as foreign companies that are north of Canada, that are looking for sites within West Virginia. Now, another thing about being in economic development is that you do go through a lot of leads, and you do work a lot of deals, and sometimes nothing ever happens. But there is a lot of interest, and we're working tirelessly with those agencies in order to try and attract those businesses to our area and make sure that they have everything they need in order to make a good decision and add value to our area and our community. Create vacant land opportunities. Obviously, we have a lot of vacant land opportunities in this area. Our strategy is to come up with opportunities for landowners that are potentially situated with a great potential for commercial development and present opportunities that they can maybe develop those properties, whether it be retail, whether it be manufacturing, whatever it may be to capitalize on the assets that we have here and create opportunities for those landowners to put those properties into play rather than sitting vacant. Small Business Resource Program. One of the things I'd like to see brought and get started here in the late spring, April, March, March or April, is a workshop program that kind of runs all throughout the year that brings resources to small business owners that will allow them to be more competitive as a business owner, bring knowledge and information that will help them run their business more efficiently. There are programs throughout the state that are doing this, and I think this is a great opportunity for this area, especially since we have the event center out there. We have a venue that we can hold these workshops in the evening, so it creates a great opportunity for them. Quarter H. Obviously, all I have written down here is "Get it done." As being with the Economic Development Authority for Upstate County, I sit on the Quarter H Authority as well. And there is a huge economic impact to getting Quarter H finished sooner than what they anticipated as 2030. So obviously, that is a huge initiative on our end. So to close, as a new director, I feel the best days are ahead of us. Obviously, always, the best days are always ahead of us. With your investment, we can work together and accomplish greatness. However, I wish that I did not have to request the $25,000. I don't like asking for money. I like to earn money. But however, I think that the Upstate County Development Authority has earned money with the actions that they've done in the past and the risks that they've taken in order to make things happen under the tutelage of Steve Foster. It's my goal to develop the authority into a financially self-sufficient entity that will not require funding assistance from the City of Buchanan. So one of my efforts, and our efforts at the Development Authority, is to create a financially self-sustaining entity, so that way we don't become a burden on the city or the county. Because I feel that, however, we have counted on these funds now. In the future, I think that those funds should be used somewhere else, and an entity of ourselves should be self-sustaining. Thank you again for your continued support, and we look forward to sharing great successes in the future. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Hitten. Any questions from the council?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Rob, and I just say this, just for full disclosure, I'm a member of the Development Authority's board. I've served as the attorney for the Development Authority for some time. But let me preface my question by saying that I concur with your perception that the Development Authority certainly has earned the support of its sponsoring bodies. You mentioned in your statement in the letter that the budget was developed with the understanding that the city had committed to funding in the amount of $40,000. Can you maybe speak to what the basis for that understanding was?
Unfortunately, I cannot, other than the former director had that understanding and placed that into the budget.
Okay, so we don't know what, where that understanding came from?
I can give you the timeline.
Okay, all right, good.
Council back in March had appropriated $15,000, same amount we appropriated the previous year. Council goes through their motions, they pass the budget, as West Virginia Code prescribes, and have it submitted by a certain time. This is also around the time period, recall, that the Upstate County Commission was making cuts. I'm assuming that's probably where the 25 came from. Our budget ship at sail. Steve Foster had contacted me, asking if they could get an extra 25. I said, "Steve, our budget is passed." I said, "We'll have to revisit that in July, when we have revisions." During that time, we've had a couple of new council members, and I approached you all in July and asked for revisions, and wanted to have a work session to talk about, Steve, and actually even to talk about Laura and the CBB's request. No one had the opportunity to meet at that time, so that's why we're here today. In the meantime, Steve Foster, the Development Authority, had to formulate his budget as well. So I'm assuming that's what happened. He put that in there with that understanding. I mean, the city has been generous, and rightfully so, in the past, of supporting the Development Authority. And there was some discussion with the previous council outside of council chambers I had with individuals about, "What are we going to do now? The county's, you know, not contributing the amounts that they have in the past." So that's probably what happened.
So the $15,000 that has been appropriated was appropriated, was begun in the budget process, began in March, for this current, what is it now, current fiscal year?
Correct.
And this isn't, this is not an additional, this $15,000 is not an additional appropriation. This is kind of the baseline that we have attributed.
This is the $15,000 that we've contributed through the past couple of years.
Okay. Okay.
I have a question, Michael. In our working council meeting, when we were talking about finances and that kind of thing, this is one of the things we discussed?
Correct, and this is one of the things, Mary, under G4, we're going to talk about.
We're going to talk about it later.
Actually, we're going to hopefully talk about it here under me.
Okay. Okay. And also, I wanted to say thank you for coming, and I had an opportunity to speak with the President of the County Commissioners, J.C., and he was asking how I was doing, and so I was asking how you guys were doing. And because there's been discussions of, "Well, did they really need the money? Did they not need the money?" And yes, they do. Okay? And it wasn't a thing that the county wasn't giving any, it's just that there's deals in place, and you have to wait till the money comes through, but you've got to have money for operating expenses, correct?
Correct. This is a timing issue.
Timing issue.
And unfortunately, the reason that this situation exists is not because of financial irresponsibility is an issue, because there was things that were out of anyone's hand, whether it be the county, the city, or the Development Authority, on timing of projects.
But they did take their 12% increase in pay.
Any other questions for Mr. Hitten?
I have a couple of observations. It's where are you from originally that you said you just moved to West Virginia?
I moved to West Virginia originally in 1998, at Tenny Glenville State College. Played football there. I am one of those individuals where they find themselves with the opportunity to come to West Virginia, and I'm originally from Akron, to answer your question, and wanting to stay. The opportunities weren't there, ended up leaving, and then had the chance to come back again in 2009, and was able to stay. And so one of the things from my perspective as an economic developer is there, and I come across a lot of people, you know, that want to stay here, because I was a student at Wesleyan, a student at Glenville, and a lot of out-of-state, even out of the international students, love West Virginia, love Buchanan in particular, and they wanted to stay here. And I think out of the house that we were had, there were seven of us. I'm the only one that was able to successfully stay, so there's a lot of good people that want to stay and attract here. We just got to create the opportunities for them.
When you mentioned the small business workshops, one thing you might want to consider is working with the college, especially their accounting students and marketing students. The Small Business Administration-
I agree.
-has some pretty nice grants for that, and even if you don't get a grant, it's good to utilize the students from the college. It's a great experience for them. And the other thing I wanted to simply throw out is that the city and the county have really collaboratively worked with the Development Authority. They're the ones that actually formed it. Initially, in 1990, the city was giving $25,000, and I can't remember how many years ago. We kept $25,000 a year until about six or seven years ago, and then it came down to 15. But it's a really good investment. There's been a lot of exciting things happen, and, you know, we'll bring this up again this evening and make the determination. But welcome, welcome to Buchanan. I'm also, full disclosure, I'm on the Economic Development Authority Board. I've got a little over, less than one year to fill out my term, and it's a great experience for everybody that's on that board, and I appreciate your involvement.
Thank you, and it's a privilege to be able to be in this position. It really is.
Rob, we certainly appreciate you coming down and giving us your presentation. As always, the Development Authority, we know, is very involved in the community and brings great things to us. Quarter H being one of the big goals that we hope that'll accomplish quite a bit for Buchanan and for Upstate County. And also, I want to congratulate you and welcome you downtown. I understand you've got your new office down?
Yes, we will move in. We empty the storage unit on Wednesday, yesterday, I guess it's yesterday, and we'll move our office furniture on Wednesday, so really look forward to that.
You're welcome, Mr. Hitten. Glad to have you.
Let me ask one more thing.
Absolutely, Tom.
Can you, is there any progress to report on the Quarter H Development Authority?
No, I have no progress to report on that.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Mr. Hitten? Our next recognized guest, thank you, Rob, is Joyce Harris Sackra with Crop Hunger Committee. We have a proclamation for her, and I recognize, you can have the floor, ma'am.
Good evening, and thanks for having us. And I'm Joyce Harris Sackra, and I know most everybody here, but I know that you all do not know probably these young folks that are with us, and I'd like for them to introduce themselves and tell a little bit about what they do here at West Virginia Wesleyan and what their expectations will be with our Crop Hunger Walk.
I'm Elaine Ashman. I'm a member of We Lead at Wesleyan, and we are on an issue team called Sustainability in Food Security. So we tackle a lot of issues concerning education around food sustainability in the community here, and also nationally, and then internationally, and then we also talk about sustainability issues that involves environmental problems, sustainable living, ways to live in a healthier manner.
I'm John, and Elaine pretty much described really well what we do. But yeah, I'm just, I'm here with these guys, and those are the elements of.
They also have flyers that they're going to distribute throughout the audience that gives more information on the Crop Hunger Walk, which is coming up October the 5th. That's at Jalboon Park. Registration's at 1:30. The walk will start at 2:00. And just would like for everyone to know that the money that is raised, 25% of that stays here locally, goes to our food pantries with the Parish House and Salvation Army. The rest of it goes to third world countries, and that is facilitated through Church World Services to bring food and water to those countries' poverty. And that's not just providing food and water, that's helping to build cisterns, helping to plant crops, and to help them be sustainable in their own right. So I encourage each and every one of you to participate in the walk and to help do your part here in Upstate County and throughout the world in fighting hunger. You know, we, probably most of us in this room take for granted, you know, where our next meal's coming from, what it's going to be, you know, we don't hunger. There are many, many people in our community that does, and many people in the world that do. And I know on an ongoing basis what great work that our Parish House does and our Salvation Army, and there are many, many people in this community that just couldn't function on a day-to-day basis without the assistance that they provide. So I thank you in advance for helping us to raise funds for poverty and hunger here in our community.
Joyce, would you like to read the proclamation?
Whereas at the end of World War II, many people wanted to share our country's abundance with European war victims, and Church World Service and crops' first purpose was to gather wheat and other crops from U.S. farms for shipment to Europe. And whereas today, locally organized, Church World Service-sponsored Crop Hunger Walks are an important part of community life for more than 2,000 towns and cities in the United States, bringing together people of different faiths, diverse cultures, and all age groups. And whereas, in the last 15 years alone, Crop Hunger Walks have raised over $200 million to help bring help, to bring help, excuse me, and hope to people in need in more than 80 countries, including the United States. And whereas, each year, Crop Hunger Walks help more than 3,200 local food pantries, food banks, and meal sites in the United States provide food to neighbors in need, including our Salvation Army, Cross Lines Parish House in Buchanan. Whereas, the annual Crop Walk will be held on October 5th, 2014, to help our community become aware of and concerned about hunger and its causes. And whereas, the Crop Hunger Walk will raise funds to help stop hunger both locally and globally. Now therefore, Mayor Davidson, City of Buchanan, City Council, do hereby proclaim October the 5th, 2014, as Crop Hunger Walk Day, and do urge the citizens of Upstate County to support this Crop Hunger Walk given under our hands at the official seal of 18th May of September 2014.
Joyce, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
We do have a lot of hungry, and even children here in Upstate County. Do you remember last school year when the principal at Rock Cave School published an ad looking for assistance, funding for the backpack program?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And that's a wonderful program, and I was really pleased that the Elkslot 1736 here stepped up to the plate. We applied for a grant for $2,000, and $2,000 buys a lot of little juices and snack bars. What they do is they pack these backpacks when there's like a storm or snowstorm or whatever, and they send these backpacks home with the kids over the weekend and when it's a long time holiday or whatever, and so they'll have snacks, and then they bring them back, and then they'll fill them up again. So it's a great thing, and there are a lot of other, lot of need for what you're doing here within our community.
As the Family Resource Network Director, I've worked with other FRNs throughout the state, and there are many of our counties, and one that has backpack programs. One in particular is Marion County, where my daughter lives, and she coordinates, she's a teacher, she coordinates the backpack program in her school at East Park Elementary in Marion County. And so I became more familiar with that program because of her, and I was thrilled, you know, when the program came to Rock Cave. I'd like to see it in every school in our community. And yes, and I would love to have folks call me. I'll try to also put them in the direction of some grant funding that we might be able to give us.
We've applied for it again, and they're going to probably give it to us again because it's a good thing. They want ongoing things like that, so.
It's a great program.
Yes, it is.
In Marion County, her church helps coordinate that for her as well, but the FRN Director in Marion County, you know, has probably eight or 10 schools that are part of that program up there, and I'd love to see our community have as many. So it is a great program, and, you know, we're involved, you know, during the summer in the Summer Fruits Program at Stockton with Mountain Cap and many of our other agencies. And, you know, you all may be aware that in our schools, we have over 60% free and reduced lunch. You know, so when the children go home during the summer, you know, the backpack program's a great program, you know, during the school year, so that they can sustain, you know, and stave off hunger during the weekends when they're not in school during the summer. You know, they're not so lucky.
And if anybody wants to get into a backpack program, they should contact you, huh?
Yeah.
There you go.
I would love that.
Okay, sorry.
It is an issue that we, you know, love to talk about, really need to talk about, appreciate. I have got some science- I have got some signs here, and we do want to distribute this information, which has, you know, websites, it has a little scan bar. You can go online and make your pledges if you need packets. There's telephone numbers that you can contact me or Alicia Grab King at Parish House, and we'll get those materials to you so you can basically make them. Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, and with Council's approval or patience, I'd like to go ahead and have us get down to the G2, which is the Crop Walk Request, use of Jawbone Park and Approval of the Crop Walk Route for Sunday, October 5th. Is there any chance to look at the route? All right, if you'll take a look at your map, it's in the packet, I believe. If you need to, I have a more defined color picture of the route. Mr. Arnold assumed has approved the route. So I would entertain a motion to approve. Oh, you did that earlier. I thought you were just approving me talking about it, changing it.
I will add that the route was changed in our students at West Virginia Wesleyan. My gosh, we just couldn't do so many things without them, and the work that they do, and graphics, and everything. It was changed to an actual 5K distance. So we're excited about that. You don't have to do the whole, you know, route. But there will be water stops along the way. If you don't want to walk at all, you can sit at Jawbone. We'll have rocking chairs there for you. Music and entertainment and food. So come out and have a good time, and we appreciate everything that you all do. Allow us to get this information out.
We appreciate what you do too, Joyce. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. Thank you very much, Joyce, and your assistants, students. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone, any other recognized guests. Is there anybody that did not get a chance to sign in that would like to be recognized to speak? All right. No? All right. That's where I'm headed next. Mr. McCollough, thank you very much. It is a tradition of City Council, and we recognize all of our students from Wesleyan College. What we'll ask you to do is take a stand-up, look at the camera, introduce yourself, your name, where you're from, and your major, please. And we'll just start right here.
I'm Colin Nelson. I'm from Charleston, West Virginia, and I'm a marketing major.
I'm Kerry War. I'm from Frederick County, Maryland, and I'm a criminal justice major.
I'm Trent May. I'm from Wiltshire County, and I'm a business major.
I'm Erica Langford. I'm from Carlsburg, and I'm a marketing major.
I'm Kelsey Beninow. I'm from Salem, West Virginia, and I'm a business and administration major.
My name's Alex Trends. I'm from Queens County, Maryland. I'm a criminal justice major, and I'm also interned with the Buckhannon Police Department.
I'm Elaine Ashman. I'm from Newton, West Virginia. I am a pre-art therapy, art education, and painting and drawing major.
I'm John Bear, and I'm an applied physics and music major.
Oh, and I'm also from Beckley.
I'm Neil T. Sports Business Major.
Where are you from?
I'm from Japan.
I'm Michael Blevins. I'm from Lewisburg, West Virginia. I'm a political science major.
I'm Ryan Reddow. I'm from Long Island, New York. I'm a criminal justice major.
I'm Jason Hardy. I'm from Toronto, Ontario, and I'm a criminal justice major.
Well, welcome to each of you, and we really appreciate you being here, and we hope maybe you'll learn a little bit more about your local government that you just happen to be residing in maybe for the next four or five months. So thank you for being here. Any question, well, there is no questions. Board reports, we have Michael Dossity, Administrator, please.
Under C1, my report, I do not have a report at this time, but C1 and C3 would like to talk about G4. If it's okay with Council. I would like to discuss in C3, meaning our city engineer Jay Holland, also has a piece he would like to talk to you about, a request, I believe, from Mr. O'Neill.
Who's on first?
Yeah, several months ago in regards to lighting. So before we get into the crux of the 2014-15 General Fund Departmental Request and Appropriations, I'm going to yield my time to the gentleman from C3 to give his presentation. All right, this will be brief, but I needed to bring this up because some things have changed since I last reported to you two weeks ago. I reported that the streetlights grant for the LED purchases or the regular metal halide bulbs, the grant ran out at the end of the year, 2014. However, we had our workshop on Monday, you know, to discuss, and then, you know, we didn't make any decisions, but, you know, we talked about various projects. The following morning, Tuesday, I received an email from the manager for the rebate program saying that the timeframe had been shortened to September 30th of, like, two weeks. And seeing how I wasn't going to get to bring this information up to you all until after, you know, that deadline, I thought I'd get in here today. That grant program is going to end September 30th. They revisited our grant for the 65 lights, you know, 43 new ones converting from incandescent to LED, and then the 22 existing on Main Street from incandescent to LED. It was originally a $23,000, $2,300 rebate. It's now a $3,300 rebate. But to break that down, I gave each of you all, it's supposed to be in your handouts, a colored spreadsheet that details how the costs are broken down. I see Mary's is black and white, but there should have been a color. All right, I'm going to give you an initial cost scenario, and then over the lifetime of the bulbs. And this is just to provide you all information to make an informed decision as to which way we want to go with the new streetlights on East Main Street and hopefully Main Street. The metal halide bulbs, which are the regular incandescent, they have an initial cost and labor to put in of $162.50 each. And this is for East Main only, for a total project of $7,000. So yes, we're putting down the 43 streetlights on East Main Street, put off purchasing the bulbs until I got your all's decision on which way we wanted to go. Got that information, working with Jerry a little bit. It's going to be about a $7,000 initial investment. Those same 43 streetlights, if we use LED bulbs, have an initial cost of $585 apiece for a total cost of $25,000. So 25 versus 7. However, the LED bulbs have a lifelike, a lamp-life light of 100,000 hours, or almost 23 years. Whereas the incandescent bulbs have 15,000 hours of life, or approximately three and a half years. Therefore, you'll replace the incandescent metal halide bulbs approximately seven times before you have to replace one LED. In addition, you all also have to replace the ballasts that drive those lights four times. So the, over the life of one LED bulb, I'm comparing the LEDs now to the metal halide, the actual operating cost of the incandescent bulbs has, are $833, you know, up from the $162. And the LEDs remain the same at $585. So just comparing the 43 lights on East Main Street, we can, over the life of the seven years before we replaced the first LED, we would spend $35,900 in metal halide incandescent bulbs, or we'd spend $25,155 for the LED bulbs. It's a high upfront cost. It's going to cost us, but yet, you know, there's no additional cost associated for the next 23, 20 to 23 years. They also have a 10-year warranty where the light bulbs don't have any, and the ballasts have a one-year for the incandescent. In addition, I added in the East Main scenario, I mean, sorry, the Main Street scenario, converting those existing lights to LEDs. Over the same 23-year operating period, it would cost us $18,000 to change out the lights on Main Street if we leave them as metal halides, or it would cost us $12,870 if we converted them over to LED. Total project cost, $54,166.67 for the metal halide, and $38,025 for the LED. But that comes down even further because we get that $3,350 rebate. So it would bring our total cost, once we invoice, put them up, invoice, I send that information to the rebate program, $34,675 would be our overall cost. And that's not counting energy savings. We're going from a 250-watt lamp to a 68-watt lamp, or just over a 75% energy savings. And as reported to you, we should expect to see that cost back to us somewhere around four and a half, 4.8 years. The cost that I presented in this spreadsheet that you're looking at is only the operating and installation cost. That does not include any of the savings, but it's a 75% savings on each of the bulbs.
So Jay, I left my sheet in the office, I apologize, but to convert all our existing lights and the ones we're getting ready to bring online to LED, the total cost would be?
Fifty, well, it's 25 for East Main, 13 for Main Street, for a total cost of $38.25, but we get 33.50 back for a total final cost of $34.675 compared to $54,166. And I just wanted to get that information to you all. You know, I'm not looking for a decision, but I've got to let, tonight, but I've got to let them know something by September 30th, and I just wanted to get this information immediately. Right. Unless you're all having a special workshop again, like, you know.
That's a pretty easy decision to make, quite frankly. Let me ask you something, Jay. I'm interested in, you can't do it tonight, but at some point in time, it'd be interesting to see what, you know, you have 75 decrease in consumption, energy consumption. It'd be interesting to know how much saving that is per year.
Well, that's why we put the East Main streets on a separate meter. We will truly know what that's going to cost us per year, divide by the 43, we'll know what it costs us per fixture. We, you know, Jerry and I got together and decided to just put those 43 lights on its own meter so that we can monitor it and truly know what it costs.
How involved is it to change one of these things?
All right, the LED comes with a driver. You snap it in, quarter twist, walk away.
Sounds a lot simpler than you said.
You got to take the lamp off. And now I'm talking for the incandescent. You've got to take the lamp off, you know, disconnect the bulb, take out the ballast, rewire the ballast, you know, and that's what you see in here, the HID labor, about an hour and a half. This is a two-man crew, and then the ballast labor, about a half an hour. So it's two hours for every LED, I mean, metal halide high-intensity discharge incandescent bulb versus one, you know, for a half, or 10 minutes.
Do we need a motion to?
Not yet. I have a question about clarification on something.
All right, go ahead.
If you don't mind. Now, Jay, you're talking to Mary here. Go back over there to that $54,166.67. You gave us a figure of a big reduction on that. That, I mean, that would be the initial cost, and then we get?
The initial cost, Mary, for East Main, I mean, for, yeah, East Main would be $7,000, okay? But that's not including, see, every bulb, if we leave them incandescent, will need to be replaced seven times, and every ballast will be replaced four times before we replace one LED bulb.
So we won't the LEDs?
It's less labor intensity. All these calculations, that's what's in the notes, you know. I've explained it out there, and I can meet with you, but the cost include the ballast cost, $57.50 times three and a third changes. The bulb costs $35, times 6.67 changes, before, this is before I change one LED. The ballast labor, $35 an hour, times a half an hour, times three and a half changes. That's why I keep referencing the four. And then the bulb labor, $35 an hour, times one and a half hours, we've got a guy on a ladder in the crew, times 6.67 changes over that 23-year period. So that's why it's operating cost is increased, because there will be, I'm not saying there won't be any, but there will be significantly less labor and operating and maintenance involved with the LEDs versus the incandescent.
Are there any plans, and I've had a call, a couple people this week, that my streetlights are out, and now can we replace those lights with these LEDs as we go along?
I don't know what type of streetlights you're, you know, looking at. That's normally Jerry's, you know, department. But I do know that Mon Power was in the area, or First Energy was in the area the last couple of weeks, and I guess we had 10 worker orders in at the time. They addressed them all, you know, and then a couple more popped up since then, but I wouldn't see why not. But if they're the Cobra Heads, that's a little different story, because they're way up high, you know, and they hang out over the street. I'm sure, I know they can be converted to LED, but I've not looked at those ones. I'm just talking the streetlights, you know, that we have on Main, East Main, the period lighting, what we're anticipating, you know, to put down Gateway West, and what the college is doing also. I think they're heading in this same direction, and if Barry or somebody were to?
Good return on investment, especially if you calculate the energy savings.
Tom, you got a question?
One last, I have one last question. What can you tell us about kind of the quality of the light, you know, versus the incandescent's going to be, you know? I mean, what are these, what are these, is this a whiter kind of light?
That's a decision that we can make. There's different warms, or Kelvins, or coolness. You know, these are the white lights. They shine white. But you can get them warm. There's a couple examples right there. Not that nice metal base, I don't like it too well, but, you know, so that they match what we have now. But, you know, the whiter they are, the more area they light up, the safer those streets become. They're relatively maintenance-free. HADCO is one of the top brands as far as streetlights and street lamps and posts. That's who we purchased from. You know, they're, all of them are out there, but I'm strictly talking the HADCO because that's the product that we have. You know, I'll have to put this out to bed. I'm sure some companies are going to offer conversion kits to fit the HADCO, kind of leaning away from that. Why buy a new project and then buy a conversion kit just to buy a lamp and save $50 or $75? I don't know. I haven't got that for you. I tried to get this all together. Once she called, I mean, once she sent me the email last Tuesday, and then I had to get this stuff together to you all to make this decision, but.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jack.
That's where I am.
I need some clarification on, Mr. Doss, you've moved C3, C4 down to G, whatever. Are you asking that this request be put down to G4? I understand that this council has already approved a certain amount for this project, but now that it's time essence, it's imperative. Are you asking for us to make a motion now, or are you waiting for us to take it down to G4?
I'm ready to take it down to G4.
It's a lesser amount, right, than what we approved earlier?
It's a lesser amount.
I'm sorry.
It's a lesser amount than what we'd approved earlier.
Has the money for this already been appropriated, Michael?
The one thing that was hanging out there was the purchase of the bulbs. We were waiting to make a decision. I purchased everything else, but the only left, the only item left in this grant, well, the grant's already spoken for, so this is our money, is which way we want to go in the lights. You know, we can go $7,000 initial, $25,000 initial, or, you know, we can buy all, you know, we can buy the 43, see how they look, do we want to attempt, you know, do that on Main Street? And that's why I gave you East Main options and Main Street options. If we didn't want to go for the?
But if we want the full value of the rebate, we've got to do both.
No, because they broke it out for me, $12,000 for Main Street, $21.50 for East Main Street. So if we chose to do East Main Street as a separate project in the next two weeks, you know, as far as deciding, but if you don't want to do all of them, then the grant goes from 30, the rebate goes from $33.50 down to $21.50. You know, so they did break it out for us if we only wanted to do the first 43. That is for you all to decide, you know, and I just wanted to get this information.
Thank you.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the council? We can take this down to G4 and discuss it with all the appropriations?
I think we need to, because that's how the agenda's set.
Anybody concur on that?
Plenty of other people asking for it.
Doss, are you giving up your time for Mr. Holland to finish his report?
Oh, I, unless you all had questions.
That's all you got? Well, C3 is on the?
He said get me out of here as soon as possible. That's what I said.
Thank you, Jay. Any questions for Jay? Any other questions? Thank you very much, Jay. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jack.
Mr. Doss has given up his time at this point.
Well, actually, actually, Mr. Edwards, if you don't mind, because we have, we have B2 still here, and we have LM, who's probably wants to get out for obvious reasons as well.
I don't know what you guys are talking about.
Laura Laddos and Rob Hiddon are still here with the Development Authority and the Upstate County Commission. And of course, they're part of G4, the appropriation, so unless they want to stick around, that's your call.
Laura?
I would really appreciate it.
Yeah, let's move it up.
Just move it up. All in G-four, all right. That's what we're doing. Laura Meadows, would you like to say anything, or?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you want to say anything, you went forward for anything while we?
I mean, if there are any questions, we had come to council in the spring, around March, again, what Michael was referring to, originally asking for an increase of the hotel motel tax, and it just wasn't a good time for council at the moment, so there was a discussion of an appropriation, and it was the exact same scenario that Michael explained that worked out with the Development Authority, so we're just following up.
Excellent. Michael, would you like to review what the appropriations are that we're discussing?
We had a, we had a special council meeting September the eighth, and discussed several items to deal essentially with some additional funds that needed to be appropriated, or re-appropriated, if you will, out of Council Capital Outlay. Currently, the Council Capital Outlay line item stands at a hundred and seventy-six thousand seven eighty-three. You did hear requests from the Police Department, the Fire Department, the CVB, the Upshur County Development Authority, our city recorder had made a request as well, and then I had made a few additional comments. You all should have received a recommendation from me on September the tenth, stating my opinions about, I felt from my position, the money should be dispersed. There were several items that were kind of, if you will, extracted out of that meeting that we're here tonight to discuss. Those items were the Upshur County Convention and Visitors Bureau appropriation, the Upshur County Development Authority's appropriation, the Police Department cameras, both body and in-car, and then I also had, I also had noted splash pad. Items that seemed to be okay with council were the Fire Department cutter system, or the Jaws of Life, if you will, and the City of Buchanan's codification service, and then the remaining monies, my preference would be to either have some of those funds put in, depending on the discussions tonight, into street department paving and sidewalks, and also the remainder of those funds to be put into Council Capital Outlay. And then with Mr. Holland's presentation tonight, something else to consider would be the LED lights for either a portion of the town, or, quite honestly, in my opinion, all of town, the existing lights, to get the better rebate, or the better, the better savings. So I guess we can talk about these, you've heard from Mr. Hinton, Laura's standing there, so those are probably the best ones to talk about right now. Again, Mr. Hinton had presented that the Development Authority's wanting twenty-five thousand of an appropriation, and the Convention and Visitors Bureau is requesting twenty. And then the Police Department cameras will probably also yield a pretty good discussion, so if you want to, let's hit those. My anticipation, again, is I want to get this money out of Council Capital Outlay and get it into projects and things that we can be doing now, and giving our department head some guidance, and particularly as we get down to paving and concrete, you know, plants run out in the wintertime, and we really want to get on some street projects in October, so having this money re-appropriated is really beneficial to the continuity in the operations of the city. Some of these items, if council's okay, we can, we can table those until another period of time. Splash pad is something I personally feel strongly about, but it's something that obviously, because they're not going to be playing in the water in November or October, I wouldn't think, or maybe they will, who knows, depending on the weather. So if it's okay, I'd like to just go down these line items, again, the information and the direction that came out of the council special session on September the eighth, and first, I guess, right up to bat, talk about the Upshur County Convention and Visitors Bureau, since Laura's here.
All right, well, we're going to do that, I'll go ahead and I'll entertain a motion to accept the appropriation for the twenty thousand for Upshur County Development Authority?
CVB.
Twenty thousand for CVB.
That's right, I'm sorry, backwards, the CVB for twenty thousand.
So move, I'll make a motion that we accept twenty thousand.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
The next item was the Upshur County Development Authority, they had requested twenty-five, I put in my recommendation twenty, however, whatever, but their request is twenty-five.
So we know from, right now they have fifteen thousand.
Right now they have fifteen, and you understand?
Is this an additional twenty, or is this raising it from fifteen to?
This is raising it from fifteen to thirty-five, or fifteen to forty, depending on.
So this is going to be in addition to that which has already been budgeted.
Correct, the original budget that we have right now currently is fifteen thousand.
And they can come back at some point in time for, if they need additional monies, that's always a possibility.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean.
And you recommend?
You recommended twenty.
I recommend twenty.
I'll make a motion to accept the twenty.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussions? Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I do want to talk a little about the splash pad, even though, even though it's something that we, doesn't have to be decided on tonight. I have twenty-five thousand in there, basically, I'm taking the funds that the Sanitary Board has given the, has given General Fund as payment on the Brook Street Pump Station project, and then put that in the street department, my intent would be to put that in the street department to be transferred to the Consolidated Public Works. A splash pad does not cost twenty-five thousand, a splash pad costs fifty thousand. My other anticipation would be to go to the Consolidated Public Works Board and ask them for the additional twenty-five thousand to make up the fifty thousand portion.
How long will it, would it take to construct it or install it?
Well, the thing about the splash pad is that there's a company I'm talking to out of Ohio that actually would do a turnkey, it would take them approximately a week, week and a half to construct and have ready the splash pad. This is actually pretty interesting, because our street department would not be burdened with having to do that.
I mean, how much lead time would they need before they could?
Well, we'd have to, we'd have to bid it out, so I mean, if we go with this, it would probably have to go out to bid sometime in February or March.
Okay, so what I'm, I guess what I'm asking is, at what point would we have to, if we're going to move ahead on this, at what point do we have to act on it in order for it to be in place, in time, for kids, for, you know, late spring?
We would probably have to act on it sometime in January or February. I just put that out there again, because it's something that we talked about at the, at the work session, and I don't, you know, I'd like to at least bring that up at some point later on, it's really, not really relevant debate.
If I can interrupt, I like the idea of the splash pad, I, you know, you know what I told you on that, and spoke in our working meeting, but from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand was a big jump on what I expected the cost to be, and I understand it's got to go out to bids, but I think that right now, we need to make decisions on the street department sidewalks and that others, the Jaws of Life, do those things first and then come back to that.
That's what I'm saying, but I know it's something that came out of the meeting, and then the feasibility of actually installing it now is just not going to make sense, because we're going to have to weatherize it.
Right.
Once we get it in, but I really, I really want to pick your ear over the next several months about this.
That'd be good.
And I will tell you this, a splash pad, a lot more, larger size, run anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand, we're actually integrating those down a little bit because of the symbolism and, you know, putting some money into it, but that's a debate for another day.
Michael, did I miss something early on in one of the meetings, because I thought this splash pad was twenty-five thousand dollars?
No, the contribution, the contribution from the consolidated, from the General Fund would have been twenty-five.
That's, that's what the meeting was on September the eighth.
You got to treat consolidated as a separate, as a separate incident.
That includes the whole cost.
Right.
I have a point of order, the, you know, I made the motion for the Development Authority, and I'm on the board, so there's a possibility that maybe I should not make that motion.
That's what my question was going to be, since he's on the board and since Tom's on the board, should they be voting on that?
Oh, yeah.
Well, they could.
Obviously, I've said it before, are either Mr. Thomas or Mr. O'Neil appointees of the
city relative to those positions?
They're not. They're not?
I can't.
I'm, I'm, I'm a county commissioner.
I think if you were acting in a dual stead as a city council member who has been appointed to serve on that particular board, that's separate and apart from being appointed by the county as a member-at-large, I think there's a distinction there, and I don't, I don't know the nature of your appointments.
Dave, I think you're appointed by council.
I think I was appointed by, well, you know, I've been involved with the Delma Authority for twenty, twenty-some years.
It's similar to, we always have a city person or board.
The mayor's on the executive.
You know, on the Parks and Recreation Board, and lots of other things that sometimes involve city expenditure funds, so in exercising the ultimate caution, and to avoid anyone being able to, you know, say there's an appearance of impropriety, it might be best to recuse yourself from this vote, I mean, that's, that's, I think that's up to the two of you individually.
From the vote or from the?
Confidence.
Motion.
I don't feel uncomfortable, quite frankly, voting for it, because I think it's important, but I just wanted to point out that, you know, I'm on the board and Tom's on the board.
I had forgotten, so that's probably my fault for not paying attention. What I would do is entertain a motion from someone other than.
So move.
And a second. All right, any discussions on it?
I'll just, I'll abstain from the vote, just out of an abundance of caution.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I abstain too, no, my abstention.
And then, and then the other item, again, is what Mr. Holland had just presented, an acquisition of the LED lights. Again, from my personal opinion and operational standpoint, it would make sense to do the entire town and the existing lights and the ones we're getting ready to, excuse me, install. Go ahead. Mary, did I answer your question sufficiently? I mean, you were, you know, about the LED lights.
Yes, you did.
Okay, I mean, you know.
I was listing out this ear and this one at the same time.
Okay.
But this one, you said it, you did, and thank you for taking time to clarify.
Okay, I would entertain a motion then for, for the LED lights.
I'll move that, I'd like to move that.
Second.
Any questions, discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Doss, I believe the next would be what, the codification?
Well, the codification was something that council gave the impression that they were in support of, I don't have it on my agenda item unless there's someone on council who'd like to discuss codification.
Well, we haven't, I mean, we didn't take any action on it. We have to take action.
But there wasn't, there wasn't any indication of that being an issue.
Well, we're doing it with all the rest, so we might as well, I would entertain a motion for the codification.
I'll move that.
Second, oh yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Excellent.
How about the Fire Department Cutter?
Jaws of Life, make that motion.
Second.
I'm, I'm, I'm tallying.
He's tallying it out, let me tell you, he won't let us go above.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion or questions about that? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
There was a motion on that one.
Who made the motion?
Mary made it, and I second it.
I think.
Mary, just mark her down, everyone, she's. Mr. Doss, anything else on that?
Yes, yes, there are a couple more items now that, now that we've got those out of the way. The final item is really, well, I'll say a couple items on it, but it's the Police Department cameras. You heard a presentation by Chief Gregory at our, at our work session meeting for both the body camera and also the in-car camera, around sixty thousand dollars. My recommend, my recommendation on this, again, is just my recommendation based off observation and discussions with Matt, would be to have the body cameras only. I did my own research and looked at Taser, a company called Taser, we're all familiar with them, and they have an Axon, A-X-O-N, body camera for three hundred and ninety-nine dollars individually. If you do that by nine officers, that's three thousand five ninety-one, allocated about ten thousand for a server that you would have to have, plus that would equal a total amount of thirteen five ninety-one, which would leave just shy of sixty-five hundred in contingencies, in case there's batteries, or maybe the server costs a little bit, and that's how derived my appropriation recommendation of twenty thousand.
I have a question, and I'm going to recuse myself from this, because I own Taser International some stock, but the, Ron pointed at the meeting on September the eighth, we had a discussion about the software package, and where that should reside, should we, I think Matt made the presentation that for some extra money we pay for the software package with the company, or we can take it in-house, which, that's an option also, and I think we'd be making a mistake if we took it in-house because of the, first of all, you can transfer liability potentially, David, you might comment on that, if we have an agency that's part of the program, rather than taking it in-house, I think that would help us as far as any potential liability. And the changes in this area are so fast, the technology, they, when you go with the company and have a contract with them, they're the ones that are required to, you know, keep the, keep the technology continuing, and if we have it in-house, that's a very difficult thing to do. That's my opinion.
Mary?
Chief Gregory?
Yes, Mary.
I, I had no idea that those things were going to, the cams were going to cost that much money, and I asked a question in our working meeting, we talked about this server or whatever, and then, you know, Rich was here, who's going to take care of that server, somebody's going to monitor it, you know, that's a body, you know, so what have you, and I asked questions, but how to get an answer, could you enlighten us a little bit more on?
Yeah, I can, if I can come up.
You know, hiring a new employee or additional employee to do something like that is very costly, and?
Right. I've learned a lot, a lot more than what I knew at the working meeting. As you knew, we had been doing a number of research in these cameras, and the information that I presented was what I had gleaned, if you will, from my research. We were able, over the course of the last week and a half, able to, if we're looking at the total package of in-car cameras and body worn cameras, we were able to narrow that down to two vendors. The issue with Taser is that it does not offer an in-car camera option, so if we would purchase the body worn cams, and would later purchase in-car cameras, we would have two different systems and two different databases to maintain the videos on. My limited understanding with Taser, and to be quite honest with you, I'm a little put out with them, because we, for a year now, we have been trying to get a demonstration of the, of the product, and every single time we contact them, their answer is purchase one, purchase one and make your decision. They won't, we can't get one to field test, we can't get a demonstration, the answer's purchase one, and then make your decision, if you like it, buy more, if you don't like it, don't buy anymore. And so I'm not so sure if that's a very good business model to follow, and I'm not so sure how that speaks to their customer service, if we would have issues with the equipment in the future. So the, that aside, in our further research, we did narrow the, this, our scope down to two companies that offered both in-car and body worn cameras, and from what I could tell, they were, they both used the same database when it came to managing your video. One is actually a little more, I guess, time-sensitive than the other, the one vendor in particular has a body worn camera that does not use the database of the in-car camera right now, however, at the International Association of Chiefs of Police Conference next month, they are unveiling the new product that will speak with their in-car camera software, and this particular product is going to be available first quarter of 2015. So if we would elect to go that route, which this would be the state-of-the-art, this would be a brand-new system, it speaks with an existing in-car system, we'd have to wait, it wouldn't be available until, until January or February. The in-car system that's available now, as I told you before, the price quotes are all over the place, you know, it's just depending on the options that you want, there's so many, you don't just say, one day, I want to buy a camera and put it in my car, it's not that simple. There are so many options that come along with it, and I know we talked about wireless capabilities, wireless is nice, and obviously, a lot more simpler when it comes to moving your data from the machine to your database, however, it's going to be a lot more costly in terms of building more infrastructure within the cruiser, infrastructure within the station, and ongoing yearly costs.
And that's the car camera?
Yes, that's the in-car camera. There are, one vendor, the two that we narrowed it down to, one actually sent us their products and said, test them. So the in-car camera came in a huge box, and I looked at it, I got it all spread out across our conference table, and I said, absolutely, I'm not. our conference table, and I said, absolutely, I'm not installing this in my cruiser. It's, it's just too much time and effort. The state police have one just like it. I had them come down, and for a couple hours that afternoon, I had a trooper walk me through the functioning of the system. And it seemed to work well. I've talked to a couple troopers and that have this system, and they're, they're quite pleased with it. However, I learned in speaking with them that the storage of the data from this in-car system that these troopers had were cloud-based. And I know we talked about the difference between whether we want cloud-based data storage or our own storage. And obviously, you know, the discussion leaned, and my own recommendation is lean toward our own storage of this data. So that was all he was able to tell me about it. Obviously, with this vendor, I didn't get a demonstration, I haven't spoken to a representative, but they just sent me the products and said, here, they're testing, which is more than I got from Taser. We did get the body cam with this particular system. We have tried it out, works very well. There may be some issues with it, I don't know, going down the road. It does have a wire that connects to a DVR that fits in your pocket, maybe there's issues going down the road. I haven't learned of any, but I know well enough technology that if it can break it well. So that could potentially be an issue, particularly in a scuffle situation. The other vendor has a self-contained body camera that, right now, in the market, and then, of course, the new one, we anticipate probably be the same way. It's a self-contained camera and DVR, doesn't have any wires. So this particular system had a representative come and speak with us, and in the two hours I spoke with the representative, I learned more about body cam and in-car, or, yeah, body cam and in-car cameras than I had in the entire several weeks of research. Because if, the, the one company that sent me the products, the user manual was 90 pages long, and I literally had a pounding headache and cross eyes after I, I walked out of the station that afternoon, just trying to understand how it worked. And so this, this vendor, the second one, sent a representative and gave a really nice presentation. It's, it was a very user-friendly system. It's myself, our administrative assistants, and Lieutenant Alden sat in on this presentation. We're all very pleased with how user-friendly it was in terms of the line officer who's going to be using them every day, and in terms of the supervisor who's going to have to be dealing with the download of the data. We didn't look at the difference between wireless and manual downloads, and to be quite honest with you, I think we could get away perfectly with manual downloads. I don't think, obviously, wireless being the state of the art, it's the 21st century, I think we could honestly, as small as our agency is, manage manual downloads, especially the way this particular system was set up. Or either one, to be honest with you, this is the one requires a special reader as opposed to this other one. As far as storage goes, there are a number of options. Obviously, the more you add the one, the more capabilities you have. At the very, at the very least, the reader for the system is, is free. Then when you start adding options in, on top of that, it's going to run into an initial cost and then an annual cost for updates, software updates on down the road. So from our understanding, a lot of this data can be stored on a PC with an external hard drive. We could dedicate a PC and an external hard drive strictly for storage of video data, and obviously have to write the policy as far as retention. The, and I'm speaking in car and body worn now, in terms of memory, video storage and retention. But as far as retention goes, again, the policy would dictate that, the general rule of thumb across the board is about six months that agencies keep the data. Of course, if it, and it has to be kept a court, it can be burned off into its own DVD and put into a file. We can manage that. We obviously already manage a records management system database. I don't feel that we would per se need an IT person just to do it. I feel confident enough to be able to manage a database on a, on another PC and external hard drive myself. Obviously, if we ran into IT issues, we could seek that, but on a day-to-day operational basis, I, I've learned enough, I feel confident I could manage it. If we wanted to take a step beyond just having this data on a regular PC, they did recommend a tower server with five terabytes of hard drive memory, and that's running somewhere in the neighborhood of about $3,500.
Is that, is that before you get the external?
Yeah, that would be, that would be, that in lieu of, so we could either get a computer, a dedicated computer and an external hard drive strictly to video memory, or say, well, we'll go a step above and beyond and get a tower server, a tower server with five terabytes of memory, and just take that step above. Because I don't know how fast it would fill up. I, I didn't look at a video, there was 20 minutes of video, it was about 850 megabytes.
I, you can, you can go to Staples and buy four terabytes of storage for about 400 bucks.
Yeah, so.
I mean, I have one in my office.
And that could be.
I think it's a good thing to have your storage loaded back up on the external anyway. If you had to make, I've, I've lost mine.
I have, I have a couple of questions. So you're describing having both.
That, that, again, that was our impression coming in. I yield to council on what direction you'd like to take. I'm just giving you our impressions and from a research and the quotes that we got.
High side, high side, high side number for both. What's the total?
High side for both.
And then can you split the high side for each?
It's gonna vary by, by vendor.
High side vendor.
Okay. If we're looking at strictly the manual, okay, just the manual download, if we go with, if we went with the tower server, we're looking at with body worn and in-car cameras, estimating about $1,000 install for nine cars.
What's the total for both?
He's getting to that.
Well, the in-car cameras is gonna run about 43,000. The installation is another 9,000 on top of that.
That's just green.
That's correct. And then the body worn is going to be about 6,000. That's just the cameras. And then the tower server on top of that is about 3,500.
So 90, 9,500 for the, for the body.
Yeah.
Really?
So if you add that into the 418, it's about 62,000 right now.
Okay, so separately, the body cams would be 9,000?
500.
500, something, what'd you say?
9,500.
Okay, and then you'd need a?
Roughly, yeah.
So the body cam?
And again, and again, I understand that if, if you go with one versus the other, one's not available yet. It won't be available until the first of 2015. And these will obviously be the newest ones on the market, the most state-of-the-art cams.
The 9,500, that does not include the server. If you were to get the, the body cam itself, you'd have to.
It does. If you, if you would estimate, because the quote I got for body cams, and this is just, this is the body cam that's on the market now, not the new one. They're quoting me at $895 a unit.
How many would you need?
Nine.
Nine.
Obviously, something brand-new probably will be around that, probably closer to $1,000.
Well, what, what does a new one do differently than the one that's available?
It will sync with the software. If you go with this one particular vendor, it will sync with the in-car camera software, whereas this body worn cam that's on the market now does not. It has its own, pretty much like Taser, it's its own software.
You had to make a choice.
The difference, though, Taser is cloud-based. These other two vendors that we narrowed down and we field tested the one, and we've had a representative with the other, we can manage on our own database.
But if you had to make a choice between the in-car and the wearable camera, which one do you think is more important for the officers to do what, you know, you require of them?
Well, like I said, Mr. Thomas, last, at the last meeting, I wouldn't discount one over the other. Obviously, body worn cameras are more versatile, they're gonna see what the officer sees, they're gonna go everywhere the officer goes, as opposed to an in-car camera which is fixed inside of the patrol unit, and it only picks up what's, what the police car sees, if you will. One is not to be discounted over the other because of that, though. Each of them have their, their usages, each of them have an important role in the investigative function. Obviously, with an in-car camera, it's going to be able to record a subject's driving, it's going to be able to record roadside interviews at a wider angle than a body worn cam would be. Obviously, a body worn cam wouldn't be able to record driving very well.
Do they record the camera back looking into the backseat?
Correct. In-car cameras do have, it's fairly standard to have two cameras on an in-car camera, one forward facing toward the roadside and one facing to the rear to record activities within the car itself. This has been useful when, and again, we've had experience with in-car cameras over the years, when we were still functioning under the VHS units. We have had incidents where we've had individuals where we have had to absolutely record their every move because they've been completely, to the point that they're out of control, they're banging their head off the, off the windshield, off the glass, and, you know, this is a liability issue for the officer to be able to record their state so that they can't come back later and say something else happened.
Well, they should. Chief, I think that the two should interface with each other, and I think one supplements the other, and I think that's what your department needs, is a system that will work both in-car and the body cam. The body cam is fine, as we've seen in some of the news reports lately, it lets you see what the officer is seeing and doing after he's out of the cruiser, when he's mixing with a bunch of people that are fighting or, or in a shootout or something like that. But the cruiser, the camera in the cruiser basically return, does everything up to that point, and I think you almost have to have an interface between the two. So if, if it comes to a vote, my, my vote's gonna be to, to get both systems.
I want to inject something from a military standpoint, because it's like my wife with, with, with money, it goes fast. She, she doesn't get channel three, so she's not gonna.
It'll be the delta. But we're gonna send her a copy. We're gonna send her a copy of the tape.
That's fine, that's all right. So far, we've, council's appropriated 109,783 out of 176,783, so the math on that, that leaves you a balance of 67,000 for appropriation.
And I would like to remind council that anything over 15K has to be bitted out.
Look, 25K.
Is it 25?
25.
That's what I just.
Actually, with equipment, there's no, there's no.
Go bittin' out.
Matt, I, I got two more questions.
Can I go first, David?
Sure.
I've been over here biting my tongue.
That's fine.
I need, I need, I need, what did you say earlier about, you know, we'd be maybe happy with one or the other? You know, that's a lot of money, okay? And we got, it's not that I don't, you know, I support the, the police department, I support all our departments. But when it comes to a police officer's safety, anything that we can do to enhance the safety of that individual, and plus do a better job, okay? I'm all for it, okay? But not $65,000 worth. Now, if, could you or could you not start out with the body cams and get one of them 3,000, 4,500 dollar tier hard drives to monitor and do whatever, and then expand on that later on?
Yeah, well, and if we're looking at expansion on down the road, I think we need to look at systems that do offer both. So to answer the question, certainly, yeah, we could start with.
Okay.
You know, I'm, I understand, I'm not advocating one or the other, I'm just presenting, I was asked to present figures.
Right, you're doing what we asked you to do.
I'm presenting figures, I'm presenting my own take on the research we've done as we've gathered these figures. So certainly, yes, we could start with one, but if we're ever to expand, we need to be mindful of that, we need to make sure.
That would be up to you to write your specs to get the initial ones to.
To be able to have both systems.
It seems to me that we have, if, if the council doesn't mind, we were rehashing some things that we discussed before, in fact, we're exploring a little bit further with this, but we still don't have the, I don't think we have personally the answers that we need, but we have a lot more of our agenda to build. Would anybody mind if we come back to this part of the questions for the chief or table it till another time when we have another meeting to discuss the rest? Or do you really want to hash this all out right?
Well, what else is there besides the?
That's gonna be my next question. Mr. Dos, is there any other?
This is it, I mean, I'm just laying numbers of what Chief Gregory presented and where we're at in reality with what you're appropriating.
Understood.
It leaves you 67,000. If, if you appropriate, if you appropriate the 62,000.
And if I could add, that's without warranties, that's, that's the one-year standard.
Yeah, that's gonna leave you about $5,000, and the only remaining items to really discuss are street department paving and sidewalks, and then the remainder of that, usually we put in council capital outlay kind of as a contingency fund, if you will, so you'd have five. It, it just really all depends on the direction. Again, I just, I'm just here like Matt is to report numbers, and you have 67 remaining.
I had two more questions.
We have 67,000.
Yes.
For the street department.
Prior to, prior to this commitment. This, this commitment, depending on which direction you go, will, will, will impact the 67. Again, if, if you do all of it, it's 62, and you're gonna take your six, yeah, you have 62,000.
Without the, without warranty.
It's gonna leave you 5,000.
And that's nothing going to the street department for streets and sidewalks?
You could put 5,000 in and bleed it out if you.
I ain't have to.
Can we, can we, oh, can we, can we try this approach? What if we were to start with the body cams, see what kind of gaps exist as far as the practical, I mean, it's great to buy the Cadillac, but if we can get by with the Ford Taurus, then that's great too. What if we were to start with the body cams, come back in three to six months, report back, say, you know, three, six months after you put them online, and then say, then you'd be in a position to say, yeah, we really do need the in-car, or we're actually getting along pretty well without it, and then we can evaluate. And then, you know, if our, if our revenues are ahead of projections, we have additional funds to appropriate at that time possibly, and we can, you know, address that then.
May I say something?
Absolutely.
I still have my two questions.
I hear you.
Yeah, well, I, I don't, so what do you put the price on the safety of our police officers? Our, our police officers are out there every day not knowing what's coming up in the next minute, if they have a domestic or if they have a chase or whatever, and it's being shown on the news, any news station you turn on now, people are taking advantage of police officers, they're suing them. This, this only does, it only goes to help the safety of the officers. You wouldn't certainly be debating on whether you'd want a, a vest for an officer that stops a 22 caliber bullet or one that stops a 357. I, I think that when you're thinking this, we'd have the money right now, and I realize we've got money for other projects that we need to do, but the safety of our nine officers we've got out there on the road, to me, should, should be paramount to, to.
How does an in-car dash cam supplement the safety of an officer any marginally more than a body cam does?
Because the, the dash cam picks up the actual footage from inside the car, it has a camera facing backwards into, to the prisoner, and if you'd see a body cam, body cam's worn where?
Usually right here.
Okay, it's, it's worn right here, okay? And normally, that's pointing right about the steering wheel.
How many instances are there of officers being injured by passengers in the back of the cruiser?
I mean, there, I've had an incident personally in the past, I've had, I've had a prisoner got shot, hoisted my weapon.
Do you think in that situation, the presence of a camera would have?
I don't know if the camera's a safety tool as far as that goes, I mean, I think it's more of an evidence, an evidentiary tool.
Sure.
Okay, if you, if you don't mind, what, first of all, Ron, I don't believe anybody's questioning that we are not concerned with the safety, excuse me, that we are concerned with the safety of our officers. The question is now, what can we afford? Can we afford both, yes or no? Are there other priorities that we could take some of that with? Is this not something we can phase into? Those are considerations we're taking, but I'm afraid we're taking a lot of our time right now on this discussion that we could be going on to other things. Now, having you ask your questions, I am going to recognize Mr. Thomas for his two questions.
And I've got nothing but time tonight, so go right ahead.
And I would make, I'd make a couple. And I would make, I'd make a couple observations, Matt, is we need to have what the annual operating cost with each one of these systems would be. You talked about the warranty, but what's the ongoing cost of both the systems?
Okay.
And how much have you, in your research, have you dealt with other police departments that have the in-car and the wearable cameras? Have you had conversations with other chiefs of police to, you know, assess how they feel about what they have?
Okay, to answer your first question, the ongoing costs depend on the options. If you go with the bare minimum and get the system and the database at the very minimum, I'm not talking wireless, I'm not talking, you know, additional options on top of the database. To my understanding, it's all included in the initial cost, and there are no ongoing costs. The ongoing costs come from where you have to buy an extended, for one particular vendor, and I know this because this was revealed during the demonstration, you have to buy an extended package database, and it's an additional upfront cost, but it also has a per-unit annual fee of somewhere in the neighborhood of about $100 per unit, per year. And so that's tacked on if you have the wireless, but if you just do the standard, my understanding is there are no additional costs aside from the upfront fee of purchasing the hardware. Any additional costs beyond that would be if you chose to purchase extended warranties, or if there, in the absence of warranties, if there were hardware malfunctions and you'd have to obviously deal with that, whether it be parts to equipment being replaced or IT issues on down the road, which I wouldn't anticipate many, honestly, unless we had a problem on the database end.
Okay, I sort of lean toward what Tom had suggested, that we phase it in, and one of the other concerns I have that we're going to be facing in the future is the task force that our city attorney and you and the mayors are working on for the drug and violence scenario, and we know that's going to cost some money in the future also. So I think we're, it makes sense for us to phase it in, do the wearables, and then have you come back, and, you know, if we think we need to do more, then you can report on that to us, and we can look at it again as far as the in-car. I mean, that's the direction I would lean, I think Tom had a good idea there.
I'm perfectly happy to have the body cams, I'd be ecstatic to have the car cams, and as far as us not having money to pay for, we're not a broke city yet, we do have some funds, we could pay for it.
Is that a motion, Ron? Are you making a motion?
No, no, I'm making a statement.
Okay, are you going to make, I would entertain a motion, unless Chief Gregory has anything to add.
No, sir, no, sir, any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion that we purchase the body cam.
There's a motion on the floor to purchase the body cams only as to an estimate of what Chief Gregory has, is there a second?
What's the number?
What is the number?
About $10,000.
$10,000.
I don't know if it was that much.
I'll clarify that.
So Matt says with the tower, it's about $14,000. But do we need the tower?
Well, let's let Matt come back.
Okay, well, all right, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean...
Okay, we have a motion on the table by, that we purchase the body cams and allow up to $14,000 for such, is there a second?
I second it.
All right, any discussion on that? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, that leaves a remaining balance of $53,000. What I'd like to do, and this may surprise council to a certain extent, I'd like to ask council's consideration and change my recommendation a little bit on the paving. I had $21,000, and bear with me when I throw this number out, I'd like to, I'd like to ask or have council consideration to put that number up to $23,000 for paving, and then leave the remaining balance of $30,000 for the council capital outlay or that kind of contingency fund, and bear with me, we've appropriated $100,000 for street paving already, so this would add another 23, which would be $123,000. That doesn't seem like much, but to be honest, and Jerry is not here now, but to credit the department, you may forget that our department does the work in-house. So that saves us a considerable amount of money. So we're really just talking $123,000 in materials, which we're actually able to spread out a little bit more because of that, so...
What would $23,000 do in an estimate, as far as paving goes?
We did, we did Pocahontas and Bayonne Street individually.
It's just about, it's $80 to $85 a ton, you know, and I don't have that number right with me, but when we were talking about a 250-foot extension on Railroad Avenue, 20 feet wide, the paving was going to be 20, 21,000, you know?
Just material.
Just material, but again, off my head, I can't do the numbers that quick anymore, but, you know, that's what you're looking at, you can do 250 by 20 for $20,000, or it's $80 to $85 a ton, you know?
Okay.
Mary, if I had a phone or a camera?
Michael, I couldn't hear you, could you repeat the amount of money, please?
Yeah, I'll...
For the street department?
The street department, if, to break, to break the remaining amount down, which is $53,000, it'd be $20,000 for the street department, which would put that number for street paving projects and concrete and curb and sidewalk, it's $123,000. And then the remaining 30, I would like, I would still like to keep money in council capital outlay, it's kind of a contingency fund for council, if there's anything that pops up during the course of a year. Believe it or not, I had a text message from the director of, when I was in Charlotte, from the director of the Strawberry Festival, asking for additional money, so, you know, when the apple's ready to bite, everybody goes, I guess.
Yep.
So those are things that you can do later on. I do want to say this, and I'd be remiss not to say this, we're in this position because of the businesses that we have in Buchanan, the stability of the economy that we have as opposed to other places, the taxpayers of Buchanan, I'm not on a soapbox, the department heads, my staff here in the office, the department heads that we have out there, but I also want to have a cautionary tale to the fact that don't have an expectation that this always happens. We don't want to get, we want to be cognizant of that. We saw what happened in Sanitary, they had to borrow $100,000, it was an emergency, that happens, but an emergency can easily happen in general fund as well. So this isn't, this is great, we have this ability to do this, we should not take this for granted.
That's exactly right.
So, I mean, that's just fiscal reality.
No, sure, no. Thank you.
So I have $23,000 for street paving and then $30,000 to go into council capital outlay, which would exhaust the appropriations for tonight.
So moved.
Mary?
I'd like to make a motion that we do exactly what Michael just said.
I just said that.
All right, motion made, and a second? Any questions?
I made, I made the motion.
David Thomas made the motion, Mary seconded it. Any discussion or questions about that?
Now, this is, this street paving, again, when you're talking about paving, is that just an overlay or is that a complete tear-down of the street and building it back up?
That is an overlay.
It's an overlay.
It's an overlay.
That's correct. Some streets just, just need overlays, others need a complete revamp.
And there's several that need a complete revamp, and so this money does not go to those projects, is that right?
This money could go to those projects. I mean, once we have, once, once we have a definitive amount, Jerry Arnold and I will sit down and we, I mean, and we'll talk about paving projects and exactly what's, what can use an overlay and what can't. Again, there's some streets that have pretty good curb, and we just need an overlay, we just need to build down.
We could spend a million dollars.
Yes, you could, and Ron, Consolidated Public Works Board would be a good one to go and ask Jerry those questions.
Well, thank you, Mary. Jay, did you want to add anything to that?
Oh, I was just going to say that, you know, the proposed Railroad Avenue extension is going to take about 200 tons of 6-inch asphalt, you know, that's how it's going to relay out. I backtracked the numbers with, you know, the 123 that you all appropriated, about 1,550 tons, you know, now, that doesn't mean anything to you all, but if it takes 200 tons to do 250-foot of street, brand new, you know, cut that in half for overlays and you can do a lot of, lot of...
I will kind of quantify this a little bit, the city of Clarksburg appropriated this fiscal year $300,000 for paving, and they do it at prevailing wage, so, I mean, you know, yeah, so we're, we're...
Any other questions for Mr. Doss on the motion, or any other questions on the motion that's on the table? Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I know this was long, but, but this is really productive for me, it gives me direction, it gives our department heads a direction, and I will have a budget revision for you at the next council meeting, Dr. Now, I'll start my report.
Good job, Mr. Doss.
Thanks.
All right, next on our list, we have the police chief, did you want to make a report, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
I'll try to be a little... Just a reminder to council that this Saturday, we will be having our open house of our new police department, we've got it all polished up, getting all the bells and whistles, I think we're ready to go. It will be from 9:00 AM to noon, we'll be running conjunction with many other activities that are occurring throughout the city on that day, one of which is the children's fair, which will be right next door to us at the Starker Youth Center, and we will have a police presence at that function as we have for the last several years as well, so we just want to kind of run both in conjunction with the other. We'll probably have our officer just a little closer to the building with his car, it'd be a natural progression into the police department. The way we pretty well set it up, we're going to have some displays and some literature set up in our lobby, and we will be offering guided tours about every 15 minutes, so folks will queue in our lobby, and from that point, we'll take groups throughout the building and be offering, again, guided tours about every 15 minutes. Aside from that, we do continue to work on the VIPS program, Volunteers in Police Service, this has been an ongoing project that we've worked on throughout, throughout late spring and into the summer. It looks like at this point, we're starting to receive enough applications to give us the go-ahead, we've got about six or seven applications of individuals, so really, I would like to get the ball rolling forward at this point. Just as a reminder to folks on council, especially to some of the folks that were not here at the time that we instituted the VIPS program. The VIPS program is going to basically be a volunteer program, interested individuals from our community will be VIPS members and will be acting in a non-enforcement capacity with the agency, so we're not going to have them out here writing tickets or doing anything that a police officer does, but we're going to have them represent us and help us with certain events such as directing traffic at parades, representing and helping us with special events, and I'll pause until the train goes by here in a minute. I'll have to compete with it. Thank you. And so the focus is to help with, again, not only directing the traffic at parades, but other events that we're involved in quite extensively throughout the year, and to become a member, there is a process that we have identified through the VIPS policy, and part of this process obviously is to undergo a background check, which we will conduct once we get that ball rolling, but also to go through an interview, an oral interview in front of a panel board, which will consist of myself, the lieutenant, the VIPS coordinator, who is an officer of our choosing, to basically serve as a liaison between the department and the VIPS members, a member of the Police Civil Service Commission, and a member of city council. So that being said, again, at the point where we've identified, I feel we have enough applications, I'm ready to start the ball rolling forward. I would like to call upon a volunteer from council to serve with us on that board to assist us in the selection of these members.
Who is first?
Roll paper scissors, maybe?
Names don't have.
Does it have to be one?
You know, I saw the little tri-fold paper about VIPS, if anybody wants some, you know, if they want to learn more about it, they come into City Hall, they pick them up out front?
Yes.
Or Jessica, or mail them one if they call.
They'll mail them one, or email me, mattgregory@baccanapolices.com, stop down at the police station, be more than happy to meet with you and discuss the program. We do have, again, we've had some folks stop by, met with them, and got some interest out there. If there's anybody else that knows of anybody that wants to take part in the program, please send them in our direction, we will certainly get them an application and add them to the list. But again, at this point, I feel we have enough that I'd like to put this board together and begin these interviews and start forming, because the next step, once we've selected them as members, formally as members, that means they've undergone the background check, they pass through the interview, they seem like they'd be a good candidate that would fit in well with helping the police department in our city, the next top step is to train them, and that's going to take the form of a citizen police academy, so we need to get that formed and get that rolling as well, which will take place after the selection process.
Will these members be wearing some kind of uniform?
Yes, sir, through the grant funding that made this possible, we were able to purchase polo shirts, there is a special patch that says, that identifies them as a VIPS member, so the only thing that they have to provide is their shoes and their khaki pants or something.
Okay, but there won't be any possibility of confusion that these members are...
No, no, nothing like a police uniform, and the reason we went with polos and the different pads was absolutely for that reason.
Are you working with the Criminal Justice Department?
Yes, sir, we, actually, the gentleman back is one of the applicants to the program, and I am currently teaching another class at Wesleyan, and I am planning on speaking with some of the other students in that class as well at this point.
Chief Gregory, what about the CERT teams?
We have, Lieutenant Laden is a member of the CERT board, he attends the regular monthly meetings, and we have spoken at length, and in fact, it was CERT members who helped us write the grant to get the funding to get this equipment for the VIPS members, and so they're well aware of the program, we've spoken at length with them about it and have tried to solicit members from that to organization as well.
Any other questions from Matt? Matt, are you finished?
Yes, sir, that's all I have.
Thank you, chief, appreciate it, appreciate how you work, too.
I would just say thanks, Matt, for what you're patrolling the Jawbone Park at night and everything, the officers down there, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Kelly Arnold, Water Department?
Mine's not very long, sir. Just one of, some of the things we discussed, like hydrate flushes will be beginning in October 6th, and we will give City Hall records where we're flushing at, so if you have any questions whether to wash your laundry or not that day, just call, they could tell you the area that we would be in. We had two water leaks in August, Evan Breath Road in Dover, worked on plow tanks, I'm on electrical service, we had to renew it, whole service and all. We abandoned 385 foot of 2-inch gallon in Fayette Street, which connected into Florida Street, that's several potential leaks, it's abandoned now. All the commercial meters, except for one, has been tested, we had two that failed, working with Michael and some of the budgeting items to try to get that taken care of, because it's quite an expensive fix on the newer meters. Let's see here, customer service truck, we had the motor to go in one of them, and we're going to have to replace the motor in it, it's been down for, what, about a month now. We attended the Rural Water Conference, took several training sessions over there, they had a lot of good training over there, and, let's see here, we're going to begin tomorrow, Jay, myself, Tom, and Michael, looking at Source Water Protection Planning Committee, Senate Bill 373, and then also, the last thing I've got is, this is a reflection on Tom and the plant operators, that they won, I think it mirrors their work, what they've done as far as the treatment of water, they took first place in the state of West Virginia for taste contest, and back in May, they took second place on taste contest through AWWA.
Congratulations.
Yes, sir.
That's an excellent honor to have, and again, shows the work that our employees do for our city and adds it back to our basics that we need. Thank you for that, Kelly. Tim Rock, State Department? Well, any questions? Mr. Rock?
All right, I'm going to report that Brook Street Pump Station is complete, operating. We are just now getting back in there and doing some surface restoration around the tennis courts of the college, just because this is the driest weather we've had this summer, and... And it's dry enough to get in there and do that. I think I reported to you the last time that we had a meeting on the Western Road South Shore, South Pass to Hampton Inn. We had another meeting with the Public Service Commission, and there's been no response from the parties that were interested in that, so that's kind of on hold. Also reported that we're buying the, purchasing the railroad grade, CXX railroad grade along Route 33. And we're waiting on the railroad to get documentation there. They say everything is in order, but we haven't heard anything from them. Our NPDES permit appeal that we've been working on for a year.
Two years.
Two years. We've just attempted another contact with the DEP, and they aren't very forthcoming with any information. I think the mayor just sent the last email. Our collection system crews are busy doing several minor line issues around town. Maybe the most notable one is Pocahontas Street between Marion and Preston Street. We've done a major upgrade there that needed to be done. And we've got a couple other small ones that we're doing. The plant, the DEP/CSO inspection went very well. We got a good report back from the DEP. We are helping our neighbors in Philippi. They're doing a major plant upgrade, and they're sending us some of their product to process, and we're trying to help them out there. We had some lightning damage at the plant. We've had a couple motors burn up and our charts burned up. We're still working on repairing that. We're planning on painting some of our underground storage tanks, maybe next summer. We've got a painting contractor looking at them. We drained them this week and had them looked at, and we'll get a price, and we think we'll do that. And our biggest project at the plant is our grit collection system, and we're well underway. We're pouring concrete. We need to get this finished before bad weather, and there's a lot of work to do. But it'll be really nice once, that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Rock? Thank you, Tanner, for your prayers and all you do. Mr. McCully?
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Several updates. Continue to work on the franchise renewal agreement with Sudden Lake. Mr. Pugh had asked, and I had asked actually some time ago too, of Peter Brown, and got the verbal answer that there had been a high court decision that exempted internet and telephony services as provided by a cable operator from municipal surcharge under the franchise. We get 5% of their cable bill. The United States Supreme Court ruled way back in 2005, June 27, 2005, in the case of National Cable and Telecommunications Association and others versus Brandex Internet Services and others. And the case does, in fact, as certified by their general counsel out of St. Louis, stand for that proposition, that we don't have that opportunity. Unless they voluntarily pay it to us. And I asked Peter, I said, "Could you ask him if they would voluntarily pay it to us?" And he said, "Yes," and the answer is "No."
I guess if you don't ask, you don't get.
Don't get, and we're not getting. So there you have it. The annexation order that you have in your packet was entered by the county commission last Thursday. And now the next step relative to that five-point acres that was annexed into the corporate limits is to refer it to the planning commission for appropriate zoning. There's 13-plus acres out there that ADS/IAA already own that's zoned industrial, so it's a no-brainer that the planning commission will take that action, but it still requires their action. And then there will be a zoning ordinance that's necessary after the planning commission makes its recommendations, so that it's all above board and according to state code. The letter that I proposed to the council two weeks ago to the Attorney General relative to the FOIA request of Mr. McGowan concerning the city's ALPR was sent middle of last week. A fellow by the name of Anthony Martin, who is chief of staff for the Attorney General, left me a telephone message. I called him right back, got another telephone message. We have placed three calls to each other, and it's, the ball is now in his court again. I have not yet spoken with him, but he did, in one of his messages, said he looked forward to working with us to get us what we needed. So hopefully, there'll be something coming on that very soon. I have an update for you relative to the task force, the drug task force. And I have a letter that I provided to you, and it's a short letter, so if you'll bear with me, I'll go through it real quickly. Regarding exploratory meeting to consider formation of Upshur Lewis Drug and Violent Crimes Task Force, dear law enforcement colleagues, I am contacting you on behalf of the city of Buchanan to invite you to participate in discussions about possible formation of a drug and violent crimes task force involving the agencies of our communities. As you know, several counties in our area, as well as throughout West Virginia, already have organized their agencies cooperatively to better combat the many issues involving drugs in their communities. The Harrison County authorities to our immediate north and the Mountain Region Task Force involving Randolph Tucker and Pocahontas County's agencies to our east have both proven highly effective in their efforts to better investigate and bring to justice those involved in drug and violent crime commission. U.S. Attorney William J. Eelenfeld II will help shepherd our agency's representatives in a seminal exploratory meeting on Friday, October 3, 2014, at the Buchanan Public Safety Complex just off of East Main Street. Our meeting will commence at 10:00 a.m. and adjourn about 12:00 noon. Light refreshments and snacks will be provided. I'm attaching the list of invited colleagues. However, if you believe that there are others from your community or agency who should be involved in this first meeting, please feel free to invite their attendance. If you have any questions about the October 3 meeting, please feel to contact either me or Police Chief Matt Gregory, very truly yours, me. And then the list that had been provided to Joe Eelenfeld earlier, when he said he would do the invitation, is attached as the second page of the letter. I got a call on Monday from his administrative assistant, their office manager up there, that said something had come up. He couldn't make the meeting on Wednesday, October 1. Please reschedule it. And if I wouldn't mind contacting the identified contacts, he would appreciate that. So that's the reason that we continue to meddle with the drug task force invitations. Last thing that I have, unless you all have questions for me, is something that particularly Jerry Arnold would be very pleased. How does he get out of these things early? Tomorrow at 1:30 in the afternoon, in back of the split rail fence operation and just beyond the existing river trail and back of Wesleyan's practice football field, the city and the college will dedicate the new learning trail. Beginning in 2009, when the brainchild of Jerry Arnold, when this matter first came up, he and I sat down at Barry Preds. He identified a six-tenths of an acre parcel that was generally grown over and wooded in back of the split rail fence operation, titled with Wesleyan. Said he had an idea, there were some grant opportunities, wanted a long-term lease on the property, rent-free, college to city. I think it's a dollar for 10 years, something like that. And we worked out the terms of that, council then approved it, mayor signed it, the whole bit. Over the past five years, grant application was made, an 80% award on what basically came out to be nearly a $50,000 project was granted by the state of West Virginia. And the finishing touches have just basically, there are few loose ends. But for the most part, the finishing touches have been made. As part of this, the new, and it's about a 15- or 20-foot-long pedestrian bridge that is in the middle of the learning trail, which is part of the river trail now. This is another 500-foot extension as we get closer to tying downtown to the Wesleyan campus along the river. The pedestrian bridge is going to be named the Anthony A. Tony Gumm Bridge. And if you'll bear with me, the mayor's signed this proclamation. Whereas Anthony A. Tony Gumm served our city of Buchanan for 17 years as a member of the city council, beginning in 1979, including nine years as mayor from 1987 to 1996. And whereas our community experienced tremendous growth that in no small part was attributed to the progressive and dynamic leadership of Mayor Gumm, including the city's expansion and improvement of utility services throughout Upshur County. And whereas Tony Gumm, in his other capacity, is a longtime professor and academic leader of West Virginia Wesleyan College, served as a primary liaison, that is a bridge between the college and the city, fostering many cooperative initiatives while working in his dual steads for the college and city. And whereas our city further will formally recognize and honor former mayor and council member Tony Gumm during the dedication by our city and West Virginia Wesleyan College of the new learning trail extension of the city's River Walk Trail on Friday, September 19, 2014, while celebrating Mayor Gumm's many years of leadership and service to our city. Now therefore, I cannot T. Davidson, mayor of the city of Buchanan, pursuant to the power and authority duly vested in me, to hereby proclaim Friday, September 19, 2014, to be Tony Gumm Day throughout Buchanan, West Virginia. I further direct that a permanent sign be erected upon the new pedestrian bridge located within our learning trail, forever designated the bridge to be the Tony Gumm Bridge. I urge all citizens of our Buchanan-Upshur community to pause and reflect upon the service and leadership of Tony Gumm, and to join the members of our city family and his friends and fellow community members during the dedication of the learning trail, to be held at 1:30 p.m. at the city's River Walk Trail on the campus of West Virginia Wesleyan College on Friday, September 19, 2014. Given under my hand an official seal as 19th day of September, 2014, Mayor Davidson.
What time is that, David?
1:30. 1:30. I know a lot of you weren't around on council, or maybe weren't even in the community, when Tony was active with the city. Of course, I was here during almost his entire tenure. There were so many progressive things that occurred under Mayor Gumm's leadership that led to some of the progressive things we continue to enjoy today, particularly with water and sewer line extensions. In the late '80s, we applied for and were successful in the Main Street grant that allowed us to redo the sidewalks and the period lighting, which basically was the first of what was then identified as three phases of the Gateway East, Gateway West, and the downtown period lighting project. So really, as we think years after his exodus as mayor way back in 1996, there were already plans for Gateway East and Gateway West being discussed then. We acquired during Tony's mayoralship, a number of acres where there had been some restrictions by the Edmiston family, that the city owned about 12 of the 25 acres where the Walmart superstore ultimately went. We worked with the Edmiston family, paid them a relatively small sum of money to have those restrictive covenants removed. It allowed us to turn around and almost immediately sell the property to the ultimate Walmart developer. City realized, I believe it was in the neighborhood of $440,000 for what we paid $5,000 for. And we have a Walmart out there. The Main Street project I mentioned, the Upshur County Development Authority, that Tony was a principal player in helping to establish, like Mr. Thomas mentioned, in that 90-91 range, just a lot of things. And too often, it seems to me that we have these folks who are longtime contributors to what we just sort of take for granted, and then they start getting up there in years, and they might not be in the best of health anymore. And this is sort of the right thing to do. I'm not banging the death knell for Tony Gumm by any stretch. I don't want it to seem that way. But sometimes we do push the envelope a bit when it comes to those things. So I think it'll be a tremendous day for our entire community, Wesleyan community, city community, as many of you as possible, if you can come out tomorrow at 1:30. There's a big cookout with city employees starting about 2:00. So we're going to try to have this done inside of 30 minutes. So that's all I have, unless you all have questions.
Well, David, I concur with everything you said about Tony and probably some stuff we left out. And I know you were involved in Main Street, and you asked me to get involved with it at one point in time also. And collaborative relationship, I think, that the city has had with the college is, Tony should be given a lot of credit for that, because the period lighting at the college and the period lighting on Main Street, and then the extension of it, was a vision, I think, that Tony had. And, you know, it's been very successful. And I think that's a great proclamation, and I hope to be there myself tomorrow.
Weather's supposed to be 72 in sunny, so come on.
I've got one other thing. I don't know if this is the right time to bring this up, David, but the, you know, I put a motion forth last council meeting to rescind the ordinance in regard to the college zone. And I certainly do not want to, two wrongs don't make a right. And if that was a motion that was out of order because it was not on the agenda, I guess I would seek guidance from you as how do we unravel that so that we're not in violation of state code and statutes? What would you suggest?
It is some hesitancy that I address it, because it's going to pick a scab off, and it's my scab, so that's why it hurts. But I think there were some improprieties relative to the method that the council sought to apply the last meeting. Specifically, and it's not to make it worse than what it seems, it's not that you can't ultimately have the matter sent back to the planning commission for reconsideration and possible retooling of the college zone. But the matter was not on the agenda. First and foremost, it was not on the agenda. Now, you can, as a local governmental body, you can discuss anything anytime you want. It doesn't have to be on the agenda to discuss something. But when you take action, particularly on legislation, one of our ordinances, it has to be on the agenda for possible action. Since it wasn't, the rescission really is probably a nullity. Since it's not on the agenda tonight, you can't rescind it or do whatever else you want either. But you can put it on the agenda for next time. Now, here's three other facets that I ask you to think about between now and October 2nd. The abolition or the rescission of legislation is the most radical form of legislative amendment, okay? So it is a form of amendment when you toss out an ordinance. In order to amend legislation, you have to have new legislation. So there has to be an ordinance to undo that ordinance. Now, in zoning, here are the next two catches. In zoning, under the state code, under Chapter 24, you have to refer a zoning matter to the planning commission for a recommendation and the filing of a report before you can entertain an ordinance to change a zoning thing. So the matter would have to be sent back to the planning commission. What's more, the planning commission unanimously, it's a 15-member body, and I think 10 of the 15 members were there that night, they unanimously approved the ordinance subject to changes that were affected and sent to city council. Once that recommendation is made by the planning commission, the state statute further requires that 2/3 of the membership of council, in this case, we have seven members, that means five members have to refute the recommendation of the planning commission. So to recap, it wasn't on the agenda. You can only amend a zoning ordinance by another ordinance. By state law, the matter first has to be sent back to the planning commission. And fourth, depending upon what that planning commission recommendation is, if you like it, fine, you can do whatever you want with it. If you're going to refuse the recommendation, it must be by a 2/3 vote. So my recommendation tonight would be to have the matter placed on the agenda at the October 2 meeting. And that at that meeting, you ask that it be sent back for reconsideration to the planning commission. And let that body, Mr. Edwards and Mr. Clemmons will be working to schedule a meeting in October to do other planning commission matters anyway. They can add that to that agenda. There'll be a legal ad in the paper. Anybody that wants to come before the planning commission at that time will have that opportunity. And that's the best course of action.
Wait, wait, wait. Just for clarification's sake, so everybody understands, and I've been having to deal with this all day, so I just want to make sure we understand, that the motion to rescind at the last meeting that we did that was out of order due to the Open Meetings Act, because it was not on the agenda, which means at this point that that rescinding is null and void, and that the ordinance 383 now stands as it that that rescinding is null and void and that the ordinance 383 now stands as it was passed initially on the two readings and made an ordinance. Correct?
Until the planning commission...
Unless we decide at the next meeting to do something else.
Counsel takes further action. That's correct, David.
All right. Now, I just want to make sure everybody understands what that statement was. Mary?
Okay. Now that I understand that it was an improper thing for our council to do, but Mr. McCauley, I don't recall you telling us that during the course of that conversation at that meeting, that you, "Back off, guys." You know, "Whoa, whoa, 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 mayor, we need to stop here."
If I may, I understand where you're coming from.
Okay, but let me, let me, no, I'm not, but let me go, let me go. Now, I'm speaking for myself here. I want you to know that I'm not against the college zone and I'm not against West Virginia Wesleyan College. The city council last night, or the last meeting, and I don't believe they failed. They made a mistake in that, but I don't believe they failed. I believe the outcome of it was good because we had people that came forward, okay, and signed in and addressed and brought additional information to this council and me as a member of the planning commission that I hadn't heard before and I wasn't privy to, okay? And we listened to them and we listened to them and we had that discussion, "Well, what do we do? What do we do? What do we do? What do we do?" And then, you know, we're divided up here of the protocol and it wasn't the right thing to do. Well, I say yes. I think it's a responsibility of the mayor and council always to do what's the right thing, and I think we did that, but we need to revamp how we do things, okay? The main thing is, I wanted to say is that we knew we were wrong in the planning commission area, the zoning research area, and the whole process, because if we weren't, we wouldn't have had people up here complaining about it. What we didn't do was take one step beyond what you gotta do, okay? And they could've, we could've, and included everybody in that pink zone rather than just a few. So these are things that I brought up to the mayor even before our last meeting, okay? These are things that I spoke to Rich Clemmons about after our last meeting, and I made some recommendations from that, for that, to be discussed at our next working committee of the planning commission. And I just think that we did a, I think, shame on us. I was disgusted, and I say shame on us for not including everybody that was involved. David, we did it the way we always have done it. Well, that's not good enough and we need to go a little further. So I think it's up to the planning commission and as the city council appointed person for the planning commission, I'd ask the council to agree that we send this back to the planning commission for more work.
We can't do that right now.
We can't.
Nope. Not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda. Okay, that's what I thought.
Mr. McCauley suggests.
Okay, so that's what I mean. Put it on the agenda for next month.
Start the reconsideration process of that job.
Right. And David, I would also like to get with you one-on-one and talk a little bit about some of my thoughts and feelings about that.
Sure, absolutely.
Are there any other questions on that? Does everybody understand what happened?
Well, I just like, I don't know, I think I'd like to defend Dave a little bit. I mean, he was getting so beat up at that last meeting, and I think unfairly so to a large degree, that, you know, I don't blame him for keeping his head down to a certain extent. I feel a little, I feel a little bit remiss myself that I didn't even think about that issue until after the fact. But I think it's incumbent on each member of council to know the open meetings law, and that's not something where we should need to have our hand held. I mean, we should, we should know that. And I think in the heat of the moment, at least for myself, I think it just, it just was not top of mind because, because of the emotions that I think were running very high during the discussion of that topic.
Tom, I don't think the council beat up on David. I mean, that's my opinion anyway. And, you know, I had a, it was a very good editorial. I don't agree with everything Brian Berkshire said in the Record Dela. I had a long talk with Brian and I've known the family for years, you're a fine family. But I think it's very important, at least from my perspective, that I don't think any of us gave the impression that we were against Wesleyan. You know, we're, I'm extremely glad that I'm a former employee of Wesleyan. I had a great experience there. And Tony Gumm actually got me involved with the city years ago. I was on a committee, I can't remember which one it was, now parking or something. But I have great support for Wesleyan. They're a phenomenal asset and resource to the community. You know, the employees and the students and it's just a, it's a wonderful institution, I think, and great deal in getting those grants. That's fantastic. The concern I had was I initially voted in favor of the ordinance, and I thought that was the right thing to do. Conceptually, I don't have a problem with the college zone, but I found out afterward, I made the assumption that people were involved in the planning process itself, and I found out that they were not. And I have two principles I really believe in as being elected official. Have a level playing field for everybody and have transparency. And I'm not focusing on David about this, but I think we as a city council have to make sure that whatever process we have, we need to get the folks involved in the planning process. I think that's really important.
Thank you, David. That's, that's where I'm concerned. Absolutely right. And we can go through this at the next meeting and we can rehash all of this, but I would really appreciate if we could move on. Now that we've had clarification on this, and I do want to think, well, I think that we learned a lesson and it had to be from outside to bring it to us. And unfortunately, we all make mistakes. So for those out in citizen land, you know, nobody's always perfect, but we've owned up to it, we understand it, and now we're ready to move on from that. So having said that, what I would like to do is move on to D. The correspondence in your package, you'll have a letter from the Upsher County Commission regarding the order of the Brushy Fork Acres annexation by the city. It's already been done. It's just for your information, unless you have any questions on that. It will be going to the planning commission to be considered for zoning. We have the consent agenda. We have the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on September 4, 2014, the approval of the minutes from our special work session on September 8. We have the approval of the payment of the bills, and we have the approval of the city of Buchanan trick-or-treat date, Friday, October 31, 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., which is actually on Halloween again this year, so that's always nice.
Cool, yeah.
I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign.
I'm gonna stay because I've got a building permit on the list.
Okay. Strategic issues, we have the Moose Lodge request, and I believe it's in your package, the use of Jawbone Park in the PA system for a community Halloween event. I would accept, entertain a motion to accept that.
That's an interesting definition for strategic, the Halloween park.
Do we have a PA system?
I'm making a joke.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, we do.
It's a big one. I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. We've already hit J. 2 with the Crop Walk request. We have an appointment to fill the water board vacancy. This is actually an information for not only those who aren't aware that Dorothy Short, who recently passed away, was on the water board, so we have certain rules that we have to fulfill in order to fill that vacancy. I would like, for clarification's sake, for the public to understand what it is, her term ends in 2015, so whomever gets appointed, that is how long the term will last. There are two things that you need to know from the citizen's standpoint on fulfilling the application or if you have a letter of interest to become on that board. It consists of five members, the mayor of the city, two members of the board are members of the council, two members of the board are residents of the city of Buchanan who hold no elective or appointed position, office, or employment with the city of Buchanan. Going on a little further, the two members of said board who know, hold no elective or appointed position or office with the city of Buchanan shall serve to 2015. All appointments except for the mayor shall be made by the council of the city of Buchanan, so we will be coming for you to ultimately approve that. And this is Part B of Section 4 of the ordinance. In the event of a death, resignation, inability, or willingness to serve of any member except the mayor, the council of the city of Buchanan shall appoint a successor to such member to serve for his unexpired term. What we are asking for, or soliciting, is any citizens of the city of Buchanan that are interested in filling Dorothy Short's vacant position, which will be till 2015, if they would, please send a letter of interest or a resignation to the city council for us to approve by the next meeting, which should be put on the agenda.
Is that June 30 of 15 or December 31?
That would be June 30 of 2015. So it's roughly a little half a year. Having said that, that's just general information for everyone. We will discuss that at the next meeting to actually appoint someone to that. Is there any questions on that at all? Does everybody understand it?
Gotcha.
We have the G. 4, which I already discussed, the General Department Requesting Appropriations. Do we really want to revisit that at all?
Nobody wants to.
Anybody want to discuss it?
We've done.
All right. Just making sure it's on the agenda. Comments and announcements, Mrs. Alba?
Nothing.
Thank you. Mrs. Capari?
Nothing.
I have nothing to say except congratulations to the water department and congratulations to our street department on their fantastic achievements. They make us look good. Looking forward to seeing a lot of people out at the park tomorrow to take a look at the newest portion of the River Road Trail, and I'm sure we're all very pleased that Mr. Gumm is being honored in such a way. That's all I have. Mr. O'Neill?
I'd like to thank Jay for his work and the council for the LED light issue. I think that's something I've been really interested in seeing happen, and I think it's going to result in significant cost savings to the city over the next, you know, several decades. And also, we've got a couple of community events this weekend. The children's, is it the Children's Festival this weekend? And the Main Street Arts Festival and everything going on at the Public Safety Complex and the stuff going on tomorrow with the Tony Gumm dedication, and it's just going to be a full weekend and Wesleyan parenting. And there's just all kinds of stuff going on.
Good weather, too.
It's a good opportunity for people to get out in the community and to enjoy the community.
Thank you, Tom. Mr. Pugh?
Well, Mr. O'Neill took everything I was going to say.
Sorry. After having a last name that starts off...
Actually, he didn't say one thing, and that is that this is Family Weekend at Wesleyan. So when you see all these strangers in town wearing orange and the little name tags and stuff, greet them, make them feel welcome, and let's go out and root for the Bobcats up on their new turf this weekend, too.
Who do they play this weekend?
I don't know.
You guys know Notre Dame?
Notre Dame.
Here?
Yeah, not the Notre Dame.
I'm thinking Notre Dame.
They were picking one in the conference room.
They had a good win last week, so.
Yep.
And so did the Buccaneers, by the way. Congratulations, Bucks.
Thank you, Mr. Pugh. Is that all, Mr. Pugh?
I could go on, but no, I'm on.
Mr. Thomas?
I'll just make a brief comment. I really thought Michael did a great job in the meeting September the 8th, and if anybody wants to get a copy of that from Channel 3, it was a two-hour workshop, and we all don't agree sometimes, but we, I think we can disagree civilly. But I think we should have those kind of work sessions maybe three or four times a year, and it's a great learning process for us because, you know, we're not in the offices and we got a lot of issues facing us as a city in the next few years, and that's a good time to really sit down and talk about things in a very important way. Y'all have a great weekend.
One last, we have, we have Amique Jenkins, who's sitting in as the assistant recorder, as the official recorder. Any of you got anything you have to say?
I'm ready to go home.
Well said, well said.
One question of David, do you want an executive session tonight?
It's not on the agenda.
I know, but...
To me?
Yeah. You always say that, so I just thought maybe...
Well, if you want to do that, that's fine.
All right. Has anybody got anything else for the good of the city?
Have a great weekend.
You safe here?
Have a safe weekend.